Good evening. I call the order. The March 6th, Sparks City Planning Commission have the roll call.
Roll call Commissioner Nowicki.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hewens.
Here.
Commissioner Camerota.
Here.
Commissioners Bowles and Spurber are absent. Assistant City Attorney Doug Thornley.
Here.
And City Planner Armando Ornelas.
Here.
Okay, we're open for poll of comment. At this time, anyone can speak for up to three minutes for an item that's on the agenda or for general public comment. Anyone need to speak? Hearing none, we'll move along. Call for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve as submitted. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, we're good. The announcements and committee reports?
Madam Chair, we have...
We've got to approve the minutes.
Oh, hold on, I skipped a part.
The minutes.
I think the minutes are approved.
Move to approve.
Move to approve?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I did the agenda.
Okay. I did the agenda, sorry about that. Okay, announcements and committee reports?
Madam Chair, we have neither any announcements and committee reports nor any informational items.
Okay, we're going to move to the public hearing items.
Good evening, Planning Commission Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you is a consideration of possible action on a rezoning of 269 acres from A40 and A5 to NUD, a new urban development located in the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. I've put on the docuCam, the parcels that are outlined in red, these are the two parcels that are A5 and then these parcels over here are A40. There's a total of seven parcels. This would be Pyramid Highway out here, coming out here and then Sparks Boulevard down in there. The rezon request is to change the zoning in the balance of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Handbook. This area has never had a final handbook on it. There are 237.8 acres of A40 zoning and 31.1 acres of A5. The applicant is requesting to rezone them all to NUD, which is represented on this map. The staff finds the zoning consistent with the master plan and the Kylie Ranch Plan Development Handbook. Based on the findings, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. I conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Karen, is that the remaining end of the parcels? Is that it?
There are two outstanding parcels that Rising Tides do not own.
Is that A4 and A5?
It's the little piece right here, that is the five acres which is owned still by the Kiley's, that's the old ranch house. And then this piece over here is owned by the Conservancy. It's actually part of the wetlands area.
Okay, thank you Karen.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Is the applicant here and does wish to speak?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of Rising Tides LLC. Also with me is Scott Christie, one of the partners in the project. We're here to answer any questions you may have. We have submitted a final handbook for Phase 6 of Kylie Ranch, which is under review now and will be coming to you here in the next month or so.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve of public hearing?
Public hearing.
Of public hearing? Anyone present who wishes to speak on this? Please come forward and state your name, your address, and then later we'll have you get a card and fill it in.
Okay. My name is Brenda Becker, 1172 Fairway Vista Lane. I just had a question about what type of buildings or what is going to go on to this NUD.
Okay.
Once again, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group. At this point, this request tonight does not grant any development entitlement, it's just a simple zoning. The handbook that we have submitted is residential, it's all residential, single family with the ability to use a multifamily in the future.
What is it?
Residential.
Single family.
Single family and there is a multifamily component as well.
Did you wish to speak too? For the record, please state your name and address.
Yes. Karen Rainey, 5786 Pumpkin Ridge Drive, Sparks. So I'm wondering with all of this property, is there, will there be published traffic flows, changes for the area? Because, you know, it's pretty, it's fairly dense right now, especially along Sparks Boulevard. And so I'm concerned with how this would impact the traffic flow. And if it, you know, and maybe it's a development that's going to be phased in, but still nevertheless, the traffic has to be considered and, you know, the density. And so I'm just wondering if that's part of this overall handbook that keeps being referred to? I'm really not sure I understand what a handbook is.
Okay, we have someone here to answer your question.
Kylie Ranch was approved in 2004 as a planned development community. It was 834 acres. And this 269 acres is the balance of the property that was approved in the handbook. At the time that we reviewed that handbook, we did have traffic studies, drainage reports, all kinds of hydrology, all kinds of different studies that were done at that time. The infrastructure has been improved to accommodate the anticipated traffic. At this point, there are no proposed changes to the uses that were approved as a master plan. A Plan Development Handbook includes a master plan which designates the different properties as the type of land use that's going to be intended to be developed. It becomes a zoning document for the property. So for the 834 acres, this is the zoning document that regulates what kind of development and what standards, including things like architectural signs, landscaping requirements, street location, the type of improvements for the streets to accommodate the traffic capacity that's generated from the project. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think, could you tell me what year was initial?
2004.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff or the applicant?
Yeah, just a, just a, it's just a zoning change as of right now, there's no anything coming forward of any developments or kind of what the plan is for what's coming in right now.
That's correct. In order for them to do any development... They will have to come back to the Planning Commission with the final handbook. Or an amendment to the tentative handbook.
Karen, but there will be no updated traffic study?
We don't anticipate that there need to be unless they have a change in the land uses.
Any further questions, staff or applicant? No call for the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. I move before the recommendation of approval to the City Council for the rezoning associated with PCN 14003, based on the findings of Z1 through Z3 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Are there any discussion on this motion? Call for the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. The motion carries. Next item, CA 2414.
Good evening, Planning Commission Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide zoning authorization for the establishment of medical marijuana cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, and facilities for the production of edible marijuana products or marijuana infused products and other matters properly pertaining here in 2, referred to as CA 2-14. The code amendment before you are the regulations governing Title 20, our zoning code. The business licensing, which is Title 5, and the public peace morals and safety of Title 9 will be a separate code amendment before City Council. In the year 2000, voters in the state of Nevada passed Question 9, amending the state constitution to sanction medical cannabis or marijuana, and especially to allow physicians to authorize qualified patients to consume and grow cannabis for the personal use. In 2013, the state legislature and the governor signed, Governor Sandoval signed the law of SB 374, which dictates the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services to develop regulations for and oversee the creation of licensed establishments for the production, testing, dispensing of cannabis and cannabis infused products for the authorized patients for medical use. The Division of Public and Behavioral Health and of the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services has issued proposed regulations for the operations of medical marijuana establishments, and is anticipated that in April of 2014 this year, the final regulations will be issued and the state will begin to process and accept applications for the registration certificates for medical marijuana establishments. As part of the state review of the applications for medical marijuana establishments, the locations must be identified. If a local government has not enacted zoning restrictions, the medical marijuana establishment is not required to secure approval from the local government. So by enacting regulations for Sparks, that, this gives the city review and input on the location and operations of these facilities. By law, there are four types of medical marijuana establishments. They are the cultivation, independent testing labs, production or infusing into edible products, and also dispensaries is the fourth. The code amendment before you tonight establishes zoning regulations for cultivation, independent testing labs, and production or infuse into edible products. The post amendment, code amendment restricts these three uses to our industrial zoning district with the issuance of an administrative review. The administrative review allows the staff to review the proposed location and facility on a case-by-case basis. I will discuss the administrative review process in more detail under the next agenda item. The first section of the code amendment is to Section 20050, which adds 10 new definitions relating to medical marijuana. Most of these definitions have come from the NRS or Nevada Rebuy Statutes. Formerly, Chapter 20.41, which is permits required for certain uses, had regulations governing the operation of mobile vendors, which was moved with a code amendment to Sections 2053060 in March of 2012. Staff is proposing to reuse this section for the medical marijuana cultivation facility, independent testing laboratory, and facilities for the production of edible marijuana products or marijuana infused products. The city's proposed regulations require the uses to comply with the Nevada regulations, including the separation criteria. There are also standards governing the operations, including loading and unloading, refuge disposal, public safety plan, property access, and emission control. The state separation requirements for medical marijuana establishments may not be located within 1,000 feet of a public or private school that provides formal educations at the preschool or kindergarten through 12th grade, and must be located 300 feet from a community facility, which includes daycares, public parks, playgrounds, public swimming pools, and centers or facilities with the primary purpose of providing recreational opportunities or services to children or adolescents. In the code amendment, staff is proposing to state that the medical marijuana must comply with the regulations of state rather than stating the current regulations, just in case there are changes in the state law. That way, Sparks will not have to amend our code to accommodate and match the legislative state regulations. The next section of the code establishes the parking requirements for these three uses. The last section of the code amendment is Section 2091.010. This is the industrial use table, which permits the three uses on our industrial zoning district with the issuance of an administrative review. The three uses of cultivation, production of medical marijuana infused products and testings are similar to the uses operating in our industrial zoning district. These uses are proposed to be permitted only in the industrial district. If the medical marijuana establishes loses its Nevada registration certificate, then the administrative review would be revoked by the city. The standard also provides that if the establishment closes, the city administrative use is also revoked. This differs from other entitlements in Chapter 20 in that administrative reviews would go with the property and not the use. We're proposing to have for medical marijuana establishments that it goes with the use. Planning staff has worked as part of a citywide project team and has gotten input from the other departments to formulate these regulations. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions?
You can have just one. On the administrative review of Chapter 20, that includes the property also, right? I mean, not only this medical marijuana, but in the Chapter 20, administrative review, we review the property plus the applicant, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but administrative review would be looking at the use on that property. So it would be looking at where the driveways are, where the circulation would be on the site, anything, any pertaining, like there's loading docks, anything like that. It would be looking at those kind of site-specific.
But the wording is, it says, Chapter 20, that administrative review does not go with the property and only applies to the proved applicant.
Only under medical marijuana.
Right, that's what I meant. Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah. Because, and just like special use permits, a special use permit goes with the property. So if you have a special use permit for a recreational facility and that recreational facility leaves the industrial building, within two years, another recreational facility can occupy that building. But because of the state laws, we felt that it would be important on medical marijuana that it does the use, this is only looking at the use and that we should be looking at that particular use and not have it as a carryover if a new person wanted to occupy the property.
So maybe, Armando, if the city of Sparks, say we don't even bring this up, we don't do it, and then what would happen?
Well, I think that's still to be resolved ultimately, but, you know, as Karen already mentioned, potentially if we leave a vacuum, then the state could license facilities in Sparks and we wouldn't have any say in it, you know? That's basically what it boils down to. I mean, there is, that's provided for in statute and, you know, that, this question is probably best referred to your attorney, but, you know, that's essentially the way the statute and the regs read now. In the absence of the state, of the city of Sparks, you know, creating a land use regulatory framework for medical marijuana establishments, the state could license them on its own.
And we wouldn't have any say about that, would we?
Not, not really. I mean, you could do it after the fact, but that's just bad business for everyone.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Armando.
Other comments from commissioners? Comments, questions? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll call for the motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move before the recommendation of approval to the City Council of CA-2-14, the main Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish zoning authority for the establishment of medical marijuana cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, and facilities for the production of edible marijuana products or marijuana infused products.
Call for a second?
Second.
Commissioners, any discussion on the motion? Let's call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, the CA-3-14. Karen?
Me again?
Yes.
I give you the warning, Commissioner Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish an administrative review process, including the process, the application requirements, the findings, and other matters pertaining there. The zoning code currently has a site plan review process, which is what we use for new construction. The site plan is an administrative process, reviews it by the reviewing agencies, which includes all the city departments plus any department, depending on what the project is, out of the city, like health department, something like that. There's no public hearing or public noticing for a site plan review, and a letter of approval was issued with conditions of approval. Currently, a form of this process is being used for, to review cell towers. This code amendment establishes procedures for the review of other uses and initially for medical marijuana. Administrative review process is being proposed to establish a process for review of proposed uses. As written, the review is conducted by the reviewing agencies with no public hearing and noticing. The zoning code will provide use standards that are typical conditions for the operation and location of the proposed use, and the administrative review will review the proposed use on a case-by-case basis to determine if there are particular issues relating to the operation of that use at the proposed site. The purpose and intent of the administrative review is to review certain uses to determine whether the proposed use is conforming to the zoning ordinance, other city codes, and other applicable ordinances. The administrative review process allows, allows the reviewing agencies, agencies to assess the proposed use to ensure that it is aesthetically acceptable and serves the interests of the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. A person seeking administrative review will file an application with the Community Service Department, Planning Division. Staff will review the application and within 15 days will send the applicant a notice if the application is deemed complete or if there's additional information required. The administrative review will be reviewed by the reviewing agencies, including city staff, and provide comments and conditions for the, for the conditions of approval. Within 30 days of deeming the application complete, the Planning Division will issue a letter with conditions of approval incorporating the concerns from the reviewing agencies and departments and, and conditions of approval. The applicant will have two years to establish the use unless another specified time is stated on the conditions of approval. If the use has not been established within two years from the date of approval, it'll sh, it shall become null and void. Once a permitted use has been established in accordance with the conditions of approval, the permit will be valid until revoked unless there's a specific expiration date. The code amendment also includes an appeal, revocation, and extension of time process. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, hearing none, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no interest in that at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, no? Do you have a question?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, well, let's make it.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council of CA 314 to amend Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish an administrative review process.
Call for a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the commissioners on this motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this motion carries. Thank you, Karen. Next item on the agenda is PCN 14002, Tim Thompson.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Before you tonight is a request for, a special use permit request to allow for a church located on the northeast corner of 12th Street and Victorian Plaza Circle. The, as you can see in your staff report in the background section, there's quite an extensive history to this particular parcel. This building was actually brought to Sparks from Wadsworth back in the early 1900s. That building functioned as a church for a number of years into, I think it was the 80s or so. The, the property owner purchased the property several years ago and invested some money into it. At the time, the property was becoming more dilapidated and there were, there was a fire, a couple fires that were inside, and so the, the adjacent property owner was, was concerned, and so they, they did purchase the property and did spend money to upgrade the, the building at that time. There was a special use permit that was approved to allow for an office. At the time, the zoning on the, in the property, for the property was R5 multifamily offices of permitted use with a special use permit. Special use permit was approved at that point in time. The property owners had a challenging time finding a tenant for this particular building. Since that time, the zoning has changed to TOD, Transit Oriented Development, and it is in the residential neighborhood category within the TOD. Within the TOD, churches are permitted use with the approval of a special use permit, which is why we're before you today. As staff reviewed the proposal, two items came to the forefront, the first being parking. There is very little parking on this particular parcel itself. There is a, not only is there the, the, what I'll call the church building, but to the north, there is a residence, but there's very little parking on this site. When the special use permit was approved to allow the office, at that time, there was a vacant lot across the street that was deed restricted, and the intent was for that lot to provide parking for this particular site. That deed restriction is still in existence today, so that parking lot will, or that, that lot will be used for parking for this particular project. As I mentioned in the study session, staff doesn't have any indication at this point how many, how many people that, or the occupancy of, of the building, and that will be determined through fire and building code requirements, whatever that occupancy is. Based on that occupancy, we can then determine what, in fact, the correct parking ratio would be. The code requires one space for every three seats or 72 inches of pew space, and so it's difficult at this point to determine just how much parking is required, not knowing how many folks are going to be in the congregation. As with many small churches, the idea is, is to try and, and build your congregation, and so while they, they may be relatively small today, the hope is, is that down the road, they will garner more interest and, and therefore have more members in their That being said, staff's not convinced that the parking across the street is going to be adequate overall for the proposed use, and so we've conditioned that the applicant do a parking analysis demonstrating that there is sufficient parking within the vicinity. Although this property is not in the parking district, the parking district one boundary is actually along Victorian Plaza Circle there. On the south side is the city of Sparks, one of the city's garages, public parking garages, and so our thought is, is that through the parking analysis study, it can be demonstrated that, that there is sufficient parking, given the, the public parking structure located to the south across Victorian Plaza Circle. The second issue that came to light was the fact that this is located... The, uh, second issue that came to light was, um, the fact that this is located in the residential neighborhood district of the T O D. Although it is located behind the theater and is very close to Victorian Plaza, um, it is located behind the theater, and it is located in an area designated as residential neighborhood, and so in an attempt to try and minimize any impact to the surrounding adjacent residential, staff has imposed an hours of operation condition, which essentially allows the church to operate between six A M. and ten P M. Staff did receive a couple of phone calls, um, from some residents that were concerned about, um, about noise, and, um, and so in looking at it, staff believed in this particular case, it was appropriate to impose an hours of operation condition. The application that was submitted stated that the Sunday service typically occurs between eleven A M. and one P M., and that on Wednesday evenings, between the hours of seven and nine, there is, um, typically, um, a worship session. Not to restrict the, the particular days of when those worship sessions could take place, staff has just imposed a blanket condition of, of no, uh, no operation between ten P M. and six A M., seven days a week, so hopefully that will give the church, um, the ability to conduct meetings as they see fit, provided it is within, um, those hours that they're permitted to, to operate. Based on that and the findings, um, staff is recommending that you approve this special use permit. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
Maybe better for the applicant, but will there be choir, music at this facility?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, with that, um, is the applicant present? Does the applicant wish to speak? For the record, please give your name, location.
Uh, they'll do it.
Hi, my name is Frank Leprey, and I'm a landlord. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Will there be a choir or a music group in this church? That was my question.
Yes, there will be.
And will there be music for both the Sunday service and the Wednesday evening service?
We have, um, music on both services.
Yes, Monday and Sunday.
Yes.
How large is the choir?
Uh, we're a small congregation, we're thirty people.
How many?
We're a total of forty people, so we'll be thinking in the future. We're, uh, we're not able to.
Other questions, comments?
Not for me, for Norrie's.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, it's open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward, identify yourself, and if not done so, please get a card and fill that out when you're finished speaking.
My name is Patricia White, and I own the house at twelve thirty-six Victorian Plaza Circle. I've already had, um, uh, two incidents with the church, and it hasn't, far as I'm concerned, have a permit to even operate. Um, I have, um, of course, street parking, and I deal with a lot with the festivals and everything going on. In this case, I had people park in front of my house, and they just threw their coffee cups and then walked to the church, okay? Right in my, you know, front yard. Um, and then later on that night, there were probably about six kids outside sidewalk, uh, running around, playing, uh, making a lot of noise. It was like eight-thirty at night, and they were doing some kind of fireworks or something, because all you could hear is pop, 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 and they thought it was funny. So I have an issue of it only because I live two doors down, you know? I deal with a lot already, you know, and that's, I took that when I bought my house, not knowing all the festivals and stuff, but I just have concern of, one, them controlling their children. If they're all inside, and the children are outside, it's, it's not a, you know, a street that, I mean, there's traffic. That's, you know, Victorian Plaza Circle. You know, so to me, that's an issue, you know, and who's controlling the kids? If they're out there, you're already making a menace, and they haven't even officially opened, you know? So I mean, that's my main concern.
Thank you very much.
Uh, my house is, well, oof, map a bit where?
Here, the plaza?
No, the other way. Right there.
So, here?
Yeah, that's my house, that big one right there. That one right there.
Just where you're at.
Any other public comment? Then we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Other than that, we'll call for the motion.
Yep, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the special use permit associated with P C N one four zero zero two to allow for the establishment of the church adopting findings S one through S six, and in fact, supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval, one through seven, as listed in the staff report.
Call for a second?
Second.
Commissioners, any discussion on this motion at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is P C N one four zero zero four, Tim Thompson.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Tim Thompson, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record, if I can spit my name out correctly. This is a tentative map request, uh, from, uh, Tim Lewis Communities for a forty-one lot, single-family residential subdivision. Uh, this is, um, what, what this is, is it's a review of an expired tentative map. Uh, this is the Upper Highlands at Cimarron East, planned development. Uh, the original tentative map was for two hundred and fifty-one lots. Um, there were three final maps recorded, um, for each of the first three phases. The, uh, final map for phase four was not recorded, um, in accordance with the timeline set forth in state law, and therefore, the tentative map for phase four expired. Tim Lewis Communities has picked up the bulk of the lots, the remaining, um, lots that are in the, uh, previously recorded subdivisions and have been building up there for a couple of years now. It is their desire to final map this phase four, um, section, the, the final forty-one lots of the subdivision. And, um, again, review of an expired tentative map, um, nothing has changed relative to the project. I think it's been staff's, um, position that any time we review an expired tentative map, nothing changes, um, on the part of the applicant with regard to the project, and none of the conditions would change as well, and I know that at the study session, there was, um, some discussion about the fire department condition and the need for sprinklers. That condition exists today, uh, on, on the, the areas that are currently being developed and that were mapped previously, and, and because it's just the review of an expired tentative map, we'd like to see that condition just move forward. I would not anticipate that, um, there would be any new requirements associated with that condition being there, because it, it exists today, again, under the previous, um, portions of the development, so, um, we would ask that you forward a recommendation of approval onto the city council for this.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Is the applicant present? Does applicant wish to speak?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and I'm representing Tim Lewis Communities. Uh, Tim Thompson did a great job of outlining, uh, outlining the, the project, and we're kind of excited to be finishing up this, uh, subdivision. As you know, the, the lots are already graded out, and, uh, Tim Lewis is, um, continuing construction in that area right now without fire sprinklers, so we just thought that was kind of an antiquated condition, but, uh, we'll proceed forward and, uh, construct without the fire sprinklers unless told otherwise. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Commissioners, any questions for the staff or the applicant at this time? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing.
It's a general business.
Oh, it's general business, we'll skip that. Then we will move right along and call for the motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a tentative map associated with P C N one four zero zero four, adopting findings T one through T twelve, and in fact, supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval, one through seventeen, as listed in the staff report.
All right. Commissioners, any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the City of Sparks, twenty thirteen annual report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Jim Rundberg.
Hello, Planning Commissioner. In front of a sellout crowd, I'm here to present, uh, the annual report that will go off to regional planning, and some of you, as regional planning commissioners, will review at the Regional Planning Commission. Probably at your May meeting would be my guess. Ultimately, it will go forward to the governing board as well for their review. I think most of you have been through this process before. Every year about this time, we bring forward the annual report to the Planning Commission, essentially asking for an endorsement to forward it, uh, to Truckee Meadows Regional Planning. We go through certain criteria that are in the annual reports middle, uh, that come from regional planning. Some of them don't apply to the City of Sparks, so they're just simply removed from the report which you received. Uh, one of the more exciting things that is in your report is in the regional form and pattern section on the first page, it talks about the city is undergoing an analysis of the zoning code, which, uh, Commissioner Sanders helped, uh, staff to identify a, an uh, support to help us go through that process. Staff is working with, with, um, Mark White out of Kansas City, and they have been helping us create new zoning code. Commissioner Lee will find that all of those things he's remembered, and the zoning code will all be in different spots.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, we're working on, right now, the most important thing we've been working on is a new permitted use table that is more in line with the year twenty fourteen as opposed to nineteen seventy-six, and it will identify current uses, we'll be able to classify uses a little bit better than we currently can. Uh, the C I P may be new information to the Planning Commission, that, that is, that stands for the Capital Improvement Program, and that is, uh, that information comes from our folks that used to be in the Public Works Department, but is now part of, uh, the Community Services Department. Some of those, uh, are listed, are improvements that were done to City Hall and are currently being done to City Hall. As a, as the report moves on, we talk about our redevelopment areas, uh, redevelopment, redevelopment area one, the Victorian Square area, and the Marina area. Uh, the Marina area, we do have some plans in to get moving forward with the, what looks like a vacant parking garage down near the Marina. The applicant is, is in, uh, trying to move forward with the project, to complete the project at that site. The planning commissioners may, uh, I guess, Commissioner Lee may be the only one that may remember, the original plans for that were to construct, uh, the parking garage and then have town hos, townhomes surrounding that, uh, parking garage, and I think that's the concept they'll be moving forward with. Of course, we continue to move forward with, uh, Praetor Fourth Street corridor plan. Uh, we're in the process now of identifying the best way to, to serve pedestrians in a multimodal system from, from Reno all the way to Sparks, probably to Pyramid Way in Sparks to, um, uh, I think, just past Virginia, is that correct, Armando? On the Fourth Street plan, and that would provide bigger bike lanes, sidewalks, and potentially, um, a different type of, uh, road network, uh, as opposed to four lanes. Audi Boulevard corridor continues to move forward as well. Uh, we identified our T O D plan. Uh, the Planning Commission remembers that we removed some of the area out of the T O D, the Employment District, as we used to call it, last year, and in the new zoning code update, we do plan to, or we will be incorporating the T O D design standards into the zoning standards, so there won't be a design standards manual, a T O D manual, and a Title Twenty. We will simply have a Title Twenty, and all those standards will be incorporated into the one document. Uh, skipping forward some, a lot of it, a lot of the stuff hasn't changed. Uh, it is, it has just been listed in the, um, in the annual report as, as the years progress, some of the things don't, one year is not enough time for us to make changes, and so some of it has remained the same over the last year. We have identified some of the things in the annual report that we hope to accomplish in our master plan update, and we've been, uh, the master plan update went on a little bit of a, a timeout, so we could work with the new zoning code and make sure that those work together. We've identified some things in the glimpse in two thousand and fourteen that I just talked about, the restructuring of the zoning code, and then potentially meshing that with a master plan update. And that concludes my presentation, and try to answer any questions if you have some.
Any questions for Mr. Rundberg at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the motion.
I move to accept the annual report to the, uh, Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion on this motion? Call for the vote?
All those in favor?
Forget about that part. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, next item on the agenda is election of the Sparks Planning Commission Officers for twenty fourteen.
This one's gonna be easy, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to appoint at the twenty fourteen Planning Commission, Dr. Barbara Sanders as chairman. Chair, you ready?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Vice Chair, you need to elect.
Madam Chair, my Vice Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Jamie Fewens for the, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen Planning Commission Vice Chair position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, motion carries. Okay, uh, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Hearing none, public comments closed. Comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll call for motion to adjourn.
So we'll...
Second.
All in, call for the vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.